I'm gonna come check it out. It's starting to keep expanding, huh? I think she's trying to get it to go live right now. We're good? Good evening and welcome to the Kingsburg City Council Regular Meeting. The council chambers are now open to the public at 100% capacity. Tonight is Wednesday, March 2nd, 2022. Before we start our meeting and call it to order, we will have the invocation given by Pastor Ricky Chambers by the Kingsburg Community Church, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Alrighty, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for another day and the gift of your presence with us here. We pray for our city, that you would continue to bring your goodness and your mercy to this place. God, that the people of Kingsburg would love their city and they would love their neighbors as they love themselves. We thank you for the peace that we have here today, knowing that that can change in a moment. And so, Lord, we do pray for the people who are suffering from war and affliction. We're thinking of the people in Ukraine right now, God, whose cities are being destroyed. And so, just be with them. May you guard them, bring your mercy, may your peace rain out over there. We thank you for the leaders in this room. We thank you for the authorities that you've put over us here. Thank you for our fire departments, our police departments, the growing departments, Lord, that we can celebrate today. Thank you for the city employees, for the servant-hearted leaders that are in this room. God, may you bless them, guard their families, keep them, Lord. We just thank you, Lord, for this place. May your goodness reign here, Lord, may your kingdom come, and your will be done in this meeting and in this place. So, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, could be seated. I'll call our 6:00 PM regular session meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you please do roll call?
Here.
Here.
Here, thank you. Item number two is to approve the agenda. I will need a motion if we want to approve the agenda as presented. I will make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. On to our favorite thing, presentations. And I'm thinking that's why we have packed house tonight. You're welcome to stay for the whole meeting after this if you'd like to. Item 3.1, swearing in a fire department employee. Shawn Kopas, firefighter EMT, and the sponsors of Fire Department. Chief, you want to come up?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'd like to introduce one of the newest members of the Fire Department. And let me tell you a little bit about Shawn Kopas, firefighter EMT. Shawn was born in Burbank, California and raised in Clovis. He graduated from Clovis East High School. In the fall of 2013, he attended City College for his EMT and completed his National Registry in January of 2014. Shawn graduated from the College of Sequoias Fire Academy in Hanford in May of 2015. He started working for Kingsburg Fire Reserve for firefighter EMT in July of 2015 and promoted to firefighter EMT in January 2022. Shawn is married to Nicole, his wife, and together they have four children. They're all sitting out in the audience out here. You want to raise your guys' hands? There you go, there you go. And tonight, Shawn's son, Easton, will be pinning him. So, if I can have Shawn Kopas, please come to the front. And your son, Easton. It's your time, buddy. Come on up here.
Oh, my gosh.
Alright, what are you, are you gonna pin dad with the goldfish? Is that what we're doing? Alright. So, we're gonna have the son, Easton, get this, what you need to do, buddy. See that sharp? Just gotta put it through that hole right there. Don't poke dad, but yeah, not straight it. Yeah, that's held out of your mouth. Straight down like that. There you go. Come the other way.
Yay!
Aye.
Aye, Shawn Kopas.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely?
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully?
And that I will well and faithfully?
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Just as a side note, Shawn is not a new addition to the Fire Department. He actually was a replacement firefighter for another individual who left to go to the state of Fresno.
Do you want to do a picture with?
Yeah, you want to take a picture of him?
And your family, too.
You guys jump up there, get some pictures. Don't feel like you have to. Come on up.
This is your moment. Oh, yeah, that's cute. Are you sure? Yes. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Another one for social media?
Yes. And the newsletter? Okay. Oh, yeah. Oh, cute. I'm gonna try not to have your fish in there, but maybe. Okay, we got it. We got it. Do you want to picture with him a quick? We'll get one of each. I'll send you all my pictures. That's nice. Are we getting counsel? Counsel, real quick? Sorry, guys. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, that's a nice one. Nice. One, two, three. One more. Alright.
Thank you very much for supporting us. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
We'll be doing a ceremonial and traditional badge pinning ceremony at the fire station. If you'd like to come over and. Cake and whenever the other crew gets back, I'm rescuing the dog in the pit.
Rescuing the dog?
In a pit, yeah.
We'll need an update the next council meeting about that dog. Item 3.2, pinning and swearing in of police department employees. Police Officer Gabriel Castellanos and Police Officer Jordan Gong. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Always a fun time and thank you for the opportunity to do this. I'd first like to introduce Police Officer Gabriel Castellanos. Gabriel was raised in Kingsburg and attended Kingsburg Schools. Upon graduation from Kingsburg High School, he attended Reedley College, where he earned an Associate of Science degree in criminology. During this time, Gabriel was a member of the Kingsburg Police Explorers, a partnership with the Police Department and the Boy Scouts of America. After graduating from Reedley College, Gabriel attended California State University Fresno and also enrolled in the Criminology 108 Directed Policing Course in partnership with the university and Fresno County Sheriff's Office. This course allowed Gabriel to complete two of the three modules of the Police Academy, which qualified him to be a Reserve Deputy Sheriff during his senior year at the university. Gabriel worked patrol shifts alongside regular deputy sheriffs, worked transportation shifts assisting deputies in the field, and was also assigned to work boating enforcement on the lakes and rivers. And I know from experience, that's a pretty good job. His experience as a Reserve Deputy Sheriff taught him that it was possible for law enforcement and the community to build a relationship. Upon completion of his directed policing course, Gabriel graduated from Fresno State and was selected as a Kingsburg Police Officer and attended the last module of the Police Academy. Gabriel is thankful to be part of the Kingsburg community. He has always had the passion for helping others and this is something he looks forward to doing here in Kingsburg. In his spare time, Gabriel likes to camp, travel to and explore new places, and spend time with his family. He is joined tonight by his parents, Gabriel and Noemi Castellanos, his fiancee Shelley, and their son Gabriel Anthony. And Shelley, in a few moments, will be pinning his badge. Next, I'd like to call up Police Officer Jordan Gong. Jordan was born and raised in Tulare, California. He attended high school at Central Valley Christian and Visalia. Growing up, Jordan had the opportunity to work for his family in the family's grocery business in Tulare. After high school, Jordan attended College of the Sequoias, where he earned an Associate of Science degree in Administration of Justice Law Enforcement Option. And after COS, Jordan attended California State University Fresno, where he earned his Bachelor's of Science degree in Criminology with a Law Enforcement Option. After completing his Bachelor's degree, Jordan attended the Tulare Kings Basic Peace Officer Academy, Class 151 at College of the Sequoias. He was hired as a Kingsburg Police Officer shortly after he graduated from the Police Academy. He was recruited to the Kingsburg Police Department by retired Chief of Police and current Police Chaplain, James Taylor. He just never stops working. And we are thankful. During the course of his education, Jordan had the opportunity to mentor students who were struggling in school as well as intern for small local police department. As well as intern for a small local police department. Jordan tells me he not only plans to serve the community of Kingsburg, but also give his best efforts to improve the quality of life for our residents. In his free time, Jordan enjoys hunting, fishing, playing video games, and spending time with his family members and his fiancee, Taylor. Jordan is joined tonight by his parents, Gary and Kathy Gong, his sister Brittany Hanson, her husband Sam, and their son Benjamin, his fiancee Taylor and her parents, Tony and Elvie, her sister Kylie Martins. Taylor will be pinning his badge. Madam Clerk, if you would administer the oath. And you guys feel free to come on up and get pictures, family members, feel free.
Aye. Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely?
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully?
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Alright, guys, relax a little bit, you can smile. The hard part is over. Okay, Officer Castellanos, why don't you step to the center and we will invite up your fiancee to pin your badge. Shelley? There we go. Thank you. And why don't you actually step to the side? Jordan, why don't you step to the center? And Taylor, would you come up and? Pin your officer? Oh, there you are. Alrighty, and I'll tell you what, let's, we'll take this in sections. Gabe, why don't we have your family come up and take pictures? And then we'll take pictures with the council and then we'll do some joint stuff and later we'll get you with Jordan.
Dee Dee. Dee Dee. Here comes JJ. Look, here comes JJ. It's JJ, look, JJ's back here.
Alright, up. Back over there, come on, you're not done. Let's get a picture with the council. And Jordan, why don't you step in there as well? And Jordan, yep, you're not done. Let's get your family up there for photographs as well. You're welcome. There you go.
Congratulations, guys, we'll have you later. Take care.
Well done, relax.
I wonder if, I think he's my first student officer. Congratulations.
That concludes our presentation. Mayor North and members of the council, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, thank you so much and congratulations. And the families, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like, but we understand you're not gonna hurt our feelings if you want to go join your loved ones.
Yeah, have a good night.
Thank you. Congratulations. Item number four is public comment. This is the time for any citizen to come forward and address the city council on any issue within its jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Do we have anyone in chambers that would like to give a public comment? Come on up and state your name and if you're a resident of Kingsburg.
Hello. My name's Kelly Culver. I'm from Dinuba. And I'm running for Tulare County Board of Supervisors, District Four, which is part of Kingsburg. I'm running because I'm concerned how much freedom we've lost. And I'll be honest, I've never really been involved in politics. I never really paid attention to them in the past. I was happy in my own little world until businesses, schools, and churches started getting shut down and masks and shots started being required. I've been a teacher for 25 years in Dinuba and what's happening in public schools right now is heartbreaking. Masks are not safe to wear for long periods of time and they interfere with learning. I teach first grade. The kids need to see my mouth and I need to see theirs. When you take this away, you interfere with learning to read. We need to protect our freedom before it's too late. I recently stopped at a Starbucks in Culver City and they had a sign saying only people with the shot were allowed to stay inside and enjoy their drink. You had to show your papers to the cashier if you wanted to stay inside. I felt like I was in Nazi Germany. We need to stand together and prevent this from happening in Fresno, Tulare, and all the surrounding counties, because Culver City is not that far away. No one should be forced to wear a mask all day or get a shot unless they choose to do so of their own free will. Wear a mask, don't wear a mask, get a shot, don't get a shot. Whatever you choose, it needs to be your choice, not the government's. I believe in we, the people. Elected officials work for the people. I believe in less government and upholding the Constitution of the United States. I love the oaths that were given tonight. As a teacher, I've taken that oath, you've all taken it. And the last two years, I think everyone's forgotten that oath. I would like to make Tulare County a constitutional or a sanctuary county that is free from mandates. Other counties have done this, it is doable. No one in America should ever have to show their papers to interest and establishment or to keep their job. I want to ensure that businesses, churches, and schools always have the protection to remain open. And I am proud of Kingsburg because you are much better than most of the surrounding towns. So, good job there. And I do love your little downtown, you guys, it's an adorable town. Seriously, since lockdown, I've spent more time in Kingsburg probably than I ever have, so thank you for that. I'm asking you to please vote for me, Kelly Culver, Board of Supervisors, District Four. And that is part of, a part of Kingsburg is District Four. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else in council chambers that would like to speak during public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment and we will move on to item number five. Item number five is consent calendar. These are items considered routine in nature and are to be placed on consent calendar. They will be considered as one item and voted upon in one vote unless individual consideration is requested. Each vote in favor of the consent calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action listed. Approval of the consent calendar items tonight are items 5.1, 5.2, 5.3, and 5.4. Do we have anyone that would like to have any items pulled?
No.
Okay, then I will need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six is regular calendar items. 6.1, Kingsburg Tri-County Hospital District Grant Policy and Grant Application Discussion. Staff Report and Presentation by Community Services Director, Adam Castaneda.
Well, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. And so, today I'd like to present to you the Tri-Kingsburg Tri-County Healthcare Grant, their cycle, district cycle. It's a cycle we were all familiar with for the last three years. And so, this is kind of my introduction to the cycle year, the beginning of the year, and essentially going forward to get projects on the list for the city of Kingsburg and partnering organizations. So, as we know, the Kingsburg Tri-County Healthcare District provides grants to various public and private organizations that provide health-related services to the Kingsburg community and surrounding area. Grants are awarded for any purpose allowed by state law, including to provide assistance in the operations of free clinics, health education programs, wellness and prevention programs, rehabilitation, and other health group care organizations or programs. So, every year in January, the board approves a list of needed health services and programs, which grant applicants can focus upon in applying for this, the upcoming cycle. This year, it's a little different. They have chosen a couple of different areas to focus on. And mental and physical health care, nutrition, exercise, and diabetes. These were pinpointed in letters that were sent out to previous grant applicants, saying that their focus was a little different. So, that's how we know that that focus has changed. May 1st is the deadline to submit applications, as always. And then the district will go ahead and announce grant awards in the month of June. And so, provided on the staff report is a list of all the awards that we've received in the last several years. In 2021, the Fire Department did receive a grant for paramedic and ambulance personnel. And so, again, excuse me. Tonight, we're just bringing this information to council to kind of seek some input on potential project proposals that you would like to see. Staff is working, my department, along with other departments are working together for other, for potential projects to bring to you in the next couple of weeks to get your approval on going forward with those. But if you have any specific projects or any ideas of where you'd like to see staff directed, I'd love to hear it. So, with that, that ends my report and happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Adam. I know I have ideas, but anybody else want to go first?
I would say a dog, for the dog park, but we don't need that anymore.
No?
So, of course, my first recommendation would be to throw Athwol Park next phases into the mix. I don't think I'll ever stop asking for that until the park is completely finished. So, that's what I'll contribute as a project idea for this item.
We definitely need to finish Athwol. If you're looking at mental and physical health, exercise, diabetes, we can easily write grants around our different parks. That's a no-brainer to do that. Now, if we want to throw in also around all of those and nutrition and exercise, diabetes, all of those, the regional sports complex would definitely. and exercise, diabetes, all of those, on the regional sports complex would definitely fit all of those because we, we've talked about tying all of those aspects in there to tap into those funds and then others as well, so the regional sports complex.
I'd also like to bring back the discussion on the senior center kitchen. I know that we submitted like close to the deadline last time and I don't think all those boxes were checked. And I think there might have been some discussion about bringing that back.
Yes. So on, on the senior center, we reached out to get some input from other organizations. And our approach, or senior Inc.'s approach this year is we're going to approach the, I guess, the application a little different. Because Fresno Madera Agency on Aging is reinstating contracts starting July 1, the need to, for a full-function, functioning kitchen is a little different this year because we're, we're changing kind of directions on how our meals are going to be prepared. We still need updates done to the kitchen, but it, the project will be completely different from the proposal we submitted last year. And so I think with that and working with engineering and public works and the fire department, we will revisit that application. But when we bring it back to you, it will be of a different scope, so.
I think the senior center, there's other things with the senior center, tying around those things, not only the kitchen, but I think there's some other things here you could do for the seniors, for the senior Inc. as well. With given those guidelines too.
Anything else?
Well, I was, I'm in lines with Michelle. The regional sports complex is big on my list. And also, I'm trying to remember, did, did Tri-County give a grant to the Hashfield? Because I know I, I know.
I believe they do.
I think they did.
Yes. Yeah, they gave one to KYBA.
KYBA, okay. Well, I know the Hashfield's in need of restrooms or I know they're trying to get some restrooms going there at the, at the Babe Ruth Diamond and they're trying to, you know, get some funds for, for that and some batting cages.
Okay.
You know, behind the, behind, I think it's left center field.
So, well, we can do, we can reach out to the KYBL organization and just see what their approach is for those projects.
All right, thank you.
I'd be in support of the regional sports complex funding.
Okay.
I think that's, that's a major, major project for this town. I think it's going to bring a lot outside of just the sports complex, so. I do want to kind of throw any extra monies that we can get at that project as much as we can while we have money, so that's, that's kind of where I'd be leaning.
It checks all the boxes, as Michelle said, also.
I have a question. Have, has the fire department brought anything to attention?
Not to.
I know that the last time they got, it says on here was 2018?
And I think that's just more along the lines of which department submit applications. For the last several years, it's been community services and, and the fire department. So my department helps the other departments come in and make sure their applications are, are in and we, we kind of come into line with, you know, what applications are coming together, so.
And the reason I ask that question is because I know that Mayor North, I believe it was during one of our ARPA workshop sessions, there was a conversation about their room where they do interviews and just how.
It's been totally redone already.
Already done?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I don't know.
It's beautiful.
Okay, cool. So, because I was like mental, I was just thinking mental health services and that would be a part of that. And just wanted to make sure that they were a part of that process, but it's already been done, so scratch that. Never mind. Awesome. Kingsburg is great. Cool. Awesome.
Any other council discussion?
Okay. Reach out to you on some other.
Appreciate it. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you, Adam. Item 6.2, COVID-19 Supplemental Paid Sick Leave Extension. Administ, sponsor and presentation by Administrative Services Director Christina Windover.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Thank you for your time tonight. I've been in front of you a couple of times over the last two years or so to talk about paid COVID-19 sick leave. So on February 9th, Governor Newsom passed a new, or signed off on a new leave entitlement for COVID-19 sick leave. There are some differences from previous years, specifically as to how many hours are available based on the reason. This year, 80 hours for regular full-time employees will continue to be the standard. However, only 40 of those hours are available for vaccination-related leave or quarantine-related leave. In order to receive the second 40 hours of leave, you do need to show a positive test for yourself or a family member that you're caring for. Similar to last year, part-time employees will receive leave based on their average hours worked. So if they work 20 hours every week, then they're entitled up to 20 hours per week. This leave is retroactive to January 1st and it expires on September 30th of this year, 2022. Employees will be given a form if they would like to request any retroactive leave from February 9th to January 1st. So we will be allowing employees to go back and get, get their, their own personal sick banks leave accruals over the next week or so with payroll. Also, the paid sick leave in 2021 and 2022 provides additional amounts of hours for firefighters because they do work more hours than full-time employees. So that's kind of a breakdown of how much leave you get and the timeframe. A lot of other parts of it are similar. Quarantine and isolation is still defined by the CDC and the California Department of Public Health. And I, I think that there are some more restrictions in terms of how many hours you can take for vaccine-related symptoms, sickness. So in 2021, you could potentially take 80 hours and say you were sick from getting a vaccination for two weeks and there was no ability to ask for proof. This year, the maximum amount of time you can take for vaccine reactions is 24 hours. So that is also a new piece of, you know, the evolving legislation. So that's my report. I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Council discussion?
I have a comment, not so much a question, but thank you. This is a lot, and I think everybody has the misperception that because COVID is slowing down, it's easier for you and city staff. But, you know, dealing with this elsewhere, this SPSL thing is continually changing, making bifurcations of hours, different qualifications, and you're constantly having to adjust to that, so we recognize it.
Thank you. Our finance department, our payroll clerk too, they, they have to do a lot to keep up with the changes with our system too, so it's definitely a group effort. Alex helps out with interpretation and sending things from the county, so I'm really lucky to have a lot of people to, to help muddle through all of this COVID stuff, so.
We know it's a lot, so we just think, yes.
You have a question. So it goes back to, it's re- retroactive to January 1? So if somebody, so how, but so the, the test is only required for, a positive test is only required for, from now on, right? How do they, how does somebody prove positive test, say from January 12th?
They could have a picture of it on their phone. They could have a note from an urgent care, their primary care physician, showing a positive test. Typically, we were not allowed to require proof of a positive test at one point, but it was pretty normal that employees would provide documentation of some sort, whether it's a picture or, or something from, from a clinic.
How about if they took a quick view, home test, didn't take a picture of it?
Then they don't get the additional 40 hours. Unfortunately, there has to be proof.
How about if, how about if somebody called in like January 12th and said, hey, I'm, I have COVID, so I'm not coming to work. Is that proof, right? If they told their supervisor, you know, hey, I'm sick with COVID and they, or they text it, isn't, isn't that proof?
We would honor the first 40 hours.
You know what I mean?
But the additional 40 hours under the legislation specifically says documentation and, you know, enumerates what examples of documentation are.
That's considered documentation, right? It should be. A text to your supervisor, hey, I have COVID.
Well, but that's just documentation of you reporting it to your supervisor. It's not necessarily proof of a positive test.
So then somebody does, if, to be retroactive, they do have to have proof of, of a positive test?
At the second 40 hours, correct, for the second 40, not for the first 40?
Not for the first 40.
Not for the first 40, okay. So they would be paid, then I see.
And quarantine isolation guidelines were shortened for a period of time before February, down to a five-day quarantine period. So five days might really be all the time that they needed if they were able to test negative on day five. So that perhaps might apply to some employees on a retroactive basis.
Right. Yeah, that, it is a lot. That retroactive one's kind of tricky.
Yeah, that's a lot that you're going to have to sort through.
And it's been difficult to, you know, make sure payroll is balancing and everything looks good for the auditors and things like that, so.
Thank you so much, Christina.
Thank you.
You and your team.
Were there any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item seven, council reports and staff communications. 7.1, Community Services Commission. Our meeting was canceled this month. 7.2, Public Safety Committee.
We're meeting on Monday.
7.3, Chamber of Commerce.
Nothing to report.
7.4, Economic Development.
We have not met.
7.5, Finance Committee.
Nothing to report.
7.6, Planning Commission. Nothing to report. 7.7, SKGSA.
Nothing to report.
7.8, Downtown Business Improvement District.
Something to report.
Okay.
Finally. So the Kingsburg Business Improvement District met this morning, March 2nd. The bid voted unanimously to recommend to council to eliminate vehicle traffic on alleys that open onto Draper Street to promote pedestrian safety and to make the alleys landscaped, landscaped with parklet spaces. They also discussed the website and their photographer. They viewed some examples of what the page might look like for each business and discussed having a main page for possibly salons, so that's a feature that they were thinking of adding. They also discussed their deadline for the first set of businesses to respond to the website consultants with their information for their individual business page and for this new website. So as you know, the Business Improvement District is putting this website together to kind of have a hub for all of the downtown businesses, what you can find in our beautiful downtown. And then last but not least, they discussed the car show, which is on April the 16th. We can't wait for that. And are working with businesses, trying to get them to stay open later that night. So that was at the meeting today and that is all I have to report.
Thank you. 7.9, Council of Governments.
Nothing to report.
7.10, Council Member Reports. Nothing?
Opening ceremonies.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. That was fun.
That was great.
No.
Just that, SKF has a new interim general manager, Veronica Casares, who is the senior engineer out there, has taken on the role as interim. Ben Munoz's last day is on Friday.
7.11, City Managers Report.
I've got some items.
All right. Yes.
So the first one is just an update from our, our conversation a couple of weeks ago. Includes the, the letter and information that was sent to Senator Caballero's office with regards to the direction council gave on her budget request, so that's included for your review. Couple of the grant updates. We have received the paperwork for the Prop 68 funding, so for the dog park and for Athwell Park. So we're executing those documents now and then we'll be able to start, you know, working on those grant packages and getting information together to start working on design and things like that, so we'll have information over the next, you know, several months with the Community Services Commission and with this group, just to keep you guys updated on that and get, get your input. Unfortunately, we did find out that we were unsuccessful in the Clean California Grant, so that was the Caltrain Grants that we submitted for the Memorial Park benchel and bathroom reconstruction as well as shade structures. So they had, 330 projects were submitted. They awarded 30% of those, so 105. Their original guideline said that at least 50% of the funding would go to underserved communities, but ultimately they awarded all 100% to underserved communities and we did not meet any of those metrics, so. I think that's, you know, that's the reason why ours weren't picked, not because of, you know, the, the projects themselves or, or the applications, but that's how they, that's how they selected their funding from, from the applications that they received, so. A couple other items. We have our ARPA workshop, so the ARPA funding, one-time funding next Wednesday night at 6:00 PM here. So we'll have a conversation specifically about that. And then you've probably seen that T-Mobile has some live social media pages, so follow those, especially their Instagram. They have a lot of updates and photos of inside the actual facility, so people are, we've gotten lots of requests just to see some of those photos and so they're, they have easier access than we do, so follow those if, if you're interested in that. So that's all I have, but happy to answer any questions. Oh, I lied. One more thing. We are, we're going to be painting the senior center. That was one of our capital projects shortly. And then also all of the individual banner poles downtown, so the blue ones, so those will be getting painted in the next, hopefully we're, we're shooting before a car show, so.
What about the, the other blue poles that are downtown, like for disabled parking, things like that?
It's not on the original one, but just, it's just the banner poles right now and then the two, the two may poles. A bunch of the other ones in the downt, in the downtown area were actually painted and done as part of, I think it was the Kwanis Club.
I think it was the Kwanis.
Did a bunch of them, but the immediate one, just, and part of it was just funding, just based upon how much we had budgeted for, for this year.
Do we have paint for the, the matching paint for those other poles?
Well, we have, we, we will have to purchase more paint for the, for the banners, but we, I think, I think we probably have some leftover from when we provided the paint and some of the supply stuff for the Kwanis Group to do the work that they did on a lot of the smaller poles in the downtown.
Okay.
There are other ones then, that you noticed, let us know and I can talk to Daniel about that too.
Okay, yeah, I know of a few I need to get done. Okay.
I have a question. Do we have any update on Linea?
Yes, but it's never usually very good.
I do, it looks good.
So a lot of the work is just waiting for, so long story is, is that there was a, a lot of delays from PG&E. PG&E's actually had their work done. There was a splicing issue that AT&amp;T ran into and so until they could get that sorted, they were unable to take their overhead lines down, so that's the big delay at the moment is that, so if you drive out there, obviously you'll see a lot of the power poles are still there. Yeah, they're, they're, well, they, they, they're supposed to be out there. There's, they've, you know, it's close to nine months past when they were supposed to be completed, so. Once the poles come down, then the rest of the paving can continue. I mean, you obviously, they've been doing landscaping and stuff onsite, but it's really nothing, nothing in terms of the final punch list items can be completed until those power poles come down and are removed and then we can pave the rest of the, the roads out and hopefully it'll be nice when it's done. Obviously, if you've been out there, Madsen Road was just paved, so that, that stretch is done. So once it's all completed, it'll be nice, but yeah, it has been a lengthy process.
Thank you. Item eight, future agenda items. We have none listed for future agenda items. Item eight, Future Agenda Items, we have none listed for future agenda items. So we will move on to item number nine and adjourn our regular Kingsburg City Council meeting.